You good? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, February 22, 2022. It's 6:30 in the evening, and it's unbelievably cold outside. And so I'm glad we're inside where it's warm. Just to let folks know that we are recording tonight's session. We're not doing a live broadcast. We are unable to do that this evening, but it will be put out a little bit later. So no one will miss it. It'll be out there and able to be. Counselors, I also have a little note from our city recorder. Please speak into the microphone and don't lean back when you're talking, although I don't seem to have any problem with being heard. But anyway, I'll let the minutes show that all the counselors are here, and they're happy to be warm. Council members, you have the minutes of February 8 in your council packet, and do they meet with your approval?
Move to approve the minutes as written. Mayor?
Thank you.
Motion, second discussion, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Yes. Okay. Visitor comments today. We have Kate Schwartzler, the executive director of the Indy Idea Hub, who's going to report on the Indy Idea Hub and grants. Good evening, Kate. And before you start, as I understand, happy birthday wishes are due to you. So from all of us to you, happy birthday. We will not sing "Be thankful."
Aww.
And you can take your mask down while you're speaking if it makes it easier for you.
Thank you. That would make it easier for me, I'm sure. So, good evening, surveyor members of council, city staff. I am excited to give some updates tonight about Indy Idea Hub. We finally got our website done, so that's like prompting us to get information out now that we feel confident that the information is updated. So please, I did put down the website address at the bottom of the page, so you have that. So I brought two handouts with me today. One, just a kind of a two-page explanation of what we've been up to, and then also an impact report that Business Oregon put together for us. So we have been doing a lot of things behind the scenes over the last couple of years and are excited to be getting more support and also applying for grants on our own, which is really exciting. And we now have paid staff, which is even more exciting. So we're headed in the right direction, and just wanted to give some updates on some programs that we are going to be starting off. We've actually been starting them, but the first events are going to be starting in May. So we formed a few years ago. There's a group of us that have been doing entrepreneurship work here in the community and decided it was time to form our own 501(c)(3), which we did, largely born out of the work that we were doing for the Rural Opportunity Initiative, which is funded by Business Oregon. So we have a lot of partners that we have been able to develop over the last couple of years that we're very excited about. We were in the first cohort for the Center on Rural Innovation, which is based out of Vermont, and they work with small rural communities across the U.S. Business Oregon, Ford Family Foundation, RDI, Sedcor, Willamette Workforce Partnerships, and also the cities of Independence, Monmouth, Dallas, and Fall City. Like I mentioned, we have our first part-time staff member now, which is starting as of January of this year. Prior to that, it was a volunteer effort. Many people involved with that. We also have two AmeriCorps members assisting us this year. We have Jenny Ma, who is with the AmeriCorps Vista Program, and she has been sponsored by the Center on Rural Innovation. And we also have Karen Edsel, also program specialists with the AmeriCorps Rare Program, which is out of the University of Oregon in Eugene. And it's been a huge help to have them. They have been here about six months, and we are looking to also bring more AmeriCorps members on next year to continue some of the work that they're doing. Just real quick on some of the current projects that we're working on. We are part of the initial cohort of the GROW program, which is sponsored by the Ford Family Foundation. So that's a five-year commitment from them. They recognize the importance of being able to help build the entrepreneurship ecosystem, specifically in rural communities. So we are just kicking that effort off. And again, we have people participating from the city of Monmouth in our stakeholder group as well, since the communities are so closely joined together. We also have another round of funding through the Rural Opportunity Initiative, and this is the first Polk County-wide effort that we're conducting. So the cities of Independence, Monmouth, Dallas, and Fall City are all contributing towards that effort. We have a remote work experience program going on right now for digital skilling, and that is, we're partnering with the Willamette Workforce Partnership. We had over 20 applicants for our first digital skilling initiative, the cohort of 10 people that will be kicking off next month, so right around the corner. And we will have a second cohort coming through this fall with that program. We also received funding through Business Oregon. We're on a team with RDI to provide technical assistance outreach to our Latinx community here. So we will be hiring a bilingual coordinator to help us with our programs and make sure that we are getting assistance across to all members of our community. And then we have a food business training that will be kicking off this next month that's using Indy Kitchen, and that is led by RDI with funding through Oregon Community Foundation. And it's a cohort of 10 people, so the class is now full, and it's for our Latinx business owners who want to start or grow a food-based business. So that's what we're up to in a nutshell right now. We're also applying for more grants and hope to continue this funding and continue building on the programs that we've started.
Great. Lots of good stuff going on.
Yes. And we did, there's a second report, which I won't go into in detail. This was put together by Business Oregon, looking at the impact that we've made over 2019, 2021 timeframe, so kind of everything leading up to this current ROI initiative that we have going right now. And we will be updating our website. We do have a survey tool that we have developed with Dialogues in Action, looking at how we can measure the impact that we have in our community and how we're growing those efforts over time.
Great. Thank you for taking the time to come and visit with us today.
Thank you.
All right. And again, happy birthday.
Thank you, Brent.
Okay. Going to go to our next presentation is Brent Demo from Polk County Family and Community Outreach. And Brent's going to go over and sit at the table a little bit more comfortable there. And are there handouts we're supposed to have, or not till yet?
I brought packets, and then I also emailed everything ahead of time.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, welcome to city council. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The most important question first is, how much time do I have so I can set this here? Because Bob asked me to talk about my department, which could take years, so I'd like to really fine-tune it and have a timeframe.
Well, we have another, a number of other things to do today. So Bob will kick you.
You tell me a number, and I won't go over it.
I'm looking for a little help from staff here. Is this, is 15 enough? I'm asking.
15 is enough if you have a lot of questions left.
Okay. 15. Thank you.
We can do it. Well, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is Brent Demo. I work for Polk County. The department that I'm a part of is called Family and Community Outreach. I brought some packets. I've emailed some things. I am not going to go over everything my department does. I'm going to highlight some things and then really key in on, I think, some services that you guys will be interested in and some really exciting things that are happening in the Monmouth and Independence area. The packet that I brought is not in the same order as the packet I emailed you, so you may have to shuffle around on that giant PDF, but we're going to get through it. I also want to say, this is my favorite kind of weather. I threw a vest on just to make it look like I'm not crazy. This is t-shirt weather to me, so I really like it in the pool. Get that out of the way. So I would say the thing that the Polk County Family and Community Outreach Department is most known for and where the most changes are, are what we call our Resource Center services. So in your packet, there is something that looks like this. It's in both English and Spanish. For the last six years, we have operated a Resource Center in Dallas, just a few miles away. That Resource Center has a lot of the services that my county staff provide, but also we co-locate different agencies like Family Building Blocks, Childcare Resource and Referral, the Arches Program out of Salem, and other community action agency programs, energy assistance, financial literacy. Lots of people sharing one spot, one space, one lobby, one application, a one-stop kind of shop. In the last two years, we also became a food bank partner with the Dallas Food Bank. We are a food bank that has opened more than 40 hours a week, so people can stop and access food services when local food banks are not open. We house the Veteran Service Office within this county department and in the same Resource Center. And on any given day, any clients can receive diapers, wipes, formula, food, gas cards, bus passes, hygiene, clothes, ways to get furniture, help with their deposits, help with rent, help with utility assistance. This happens every day, and you don't have to be present to do that. We do 99% of everything over the phone. In fact, as I talk about each one of these programs, my staff put together some numbers. This is something that I can send to you later if you need this, but they gave it to me before I left. So for example, in the last 12 months, we have done $141,000 of assistance just for Independence residents by themselves. In Monmouth, we did 146, and in Dallas, we did 149. So you can see that Independence is literally hundreds of dollars less than some of the other areas for the type of assistance that we do. That's everything from medical equipment, emergency rent or utility assistance, deposit assistance, IDs, birth certificates, or any health or hygiene supplies. That's all in those categories. I want to make sure that I also, I said it once, I'm going to say it again, that you don't have to be present to come to the Resource Center. But when you think about the Monmouth Independence area, they make up approximately 43% right now of all of the financial information I gave you. About 43% of that is coming to the Monmouth Independence area. And overall, for all of our services that we do in our department, 70% comes from the central area. We still recognize that we want to be in this community. I'm going to get to those updates in just a moment. But going from my notes, I also want to emphasize that we do have multiple bilingual and bicultural staff, both English and Spanish. We have males and we have females. So we're really able to represent the community here in Polk County with the staff that we have and the services that we provide. So let's get to some exciting news. Exciting news is, I know a lot of you, I've heard from a lot of you, that it would sure be great if some of these services were here. And many of you have been around long enough to know that a couple of years back, we tried having a kind of a satellite resource center here in the Monmouth Independence area. I actually didn't have very many staff at that time in my department. Our funding has changed. We do have more staff. We have more resources. And I'm excited to tell you that beginning on March 1st, we will be, in a partnership with Central School District, we will be outstationing staff at the Ash Creek Annex, right across from Ash Creek Elementary School. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, I will have three staff every day here. They're called Resource Connectors, Spanish-speaking and English-speaking, to start serving this community in person. We'll still run our shop in Dallas, too. People can go to either site, but on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, there'll be a place right here in town that people can come and access every service that they can access currently in Dallas. We're doing that, one, because the district is offering up that space to us at a very reasonable price, and also because our county is planning on relocating my entire department and building in the Monmouth Independence area within the next 18 months. So this is sort of a prelude to, everything that I do at the Academy Building in Dallas is going to be coming to Monmouth Independence, and our entire department is going to relocate into a two-story building, which will also allow me, something exciting, to have somewhere between eight and 20 other nonprofits co-locate with us, like we do in our small space in Dallas. We're thinking of things like, it's been such a long time since the Housing Authority, or DHS Self-Sufficiency, or child welfare, or a lot of programs that are either located in Salem or Dallas. We're going to be able to work out, nobody has said yes. You guys are actually some of the first people to hear this. So in my mind, there's 39 people I want to talk to about sharing space. None of them know I'm coming. But we really want to have people located where folks are and where those services are most needed. So some pretty, pretty exciting stuff there. I'm going to take a break just for a second. Does anybody have questions about Resource Center stuff before I move on to other things?
Kathy?
I can't see your name tag. I'd love to address you by your name, but I can't.
Kathy Martin Willis. How are you doing, Brent?
I'm an ass, though.
Yes. Okay. It's been a while. Okay. So you mentioned starting 3/1 at the Ash Creek Annex. You'd have an outreach coordinator Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I'm sorry?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And I did not catch hours?
It's a great question. I imagine it'll be 8 to 5, just like our other place, but nobody told me that in my notes. But I'll get back to you on hours, but it's probably 8 to 5.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. That was it for me.
Counselor Morton?
Brent?
Hello?
Hi. You mentioned a two-story building that you're going into here?
Yeah, we're going to build it.
Oh, you're going to build it. Thank you. Will it be near the Annex also?
The proposed site right now is behind Roth's on the S-curves.
Okay. Thank you.
What are the requirements for someone to be able, be eligible to get services?
That's what I love about us. A lot of the stuff, there aren't requirements. There are funding streams that we have, that we have kind of some control over. So things like getting help with ID, getting help with birth certificates, getting help with food, hygiene supplies, diapers, wipes, that kind of stuff, there aren't requirements. If people need that kind of help, they can come and get it. Then the other answer that sounds way more government is, depending on the funding stream we have, it really will depend on other kinds of requirements. So for example, right now, we're just starting a food delivery program for all of rural Polk County. There are no requirements whatsoever, except you can't live in West Salem, and that's a federal guideline. So we can literally deliver food to anyone in Polk County between now and December. Every week, we'll do a route and get out there and deliver food. These are for folks who can't access a food bank, and there's no, there's no criteria. The same agency funded me to pay for people's childcare for the next year. That one has requirements. You have to meet certain income guidelines and had to have had a COVID-related emergency. So it really just depends on the funder. Sometimes when we're doing rental assistance, we have to follow guidelines or housing guidelines from the state, but a lot of the funding we have is also pretty flexible. So what I tell people is, if you're going to listen to anything I say today and try to remember something, it's just called a Resource Center. The staff at the Resource Center, there's a team of five Resource Connectors there. They are so good at just knowing every resource in the area on how to help somebody.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. And Brent, just a quick follow-up. Will that be the same 9664 phone number on your flyer?
It is. Yeah. We're going to keep the phone number the same at both sites.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Good.
Keep rolling.
Okay. Here we go. We're rolling. So that was Resource Center stuff. Other things that I want to tell you guys, we have amazing staff in the school districts, too. We've had a school-based mental health program in Polk County for over 20 years. We have staff in every building in Central, and sometimes we have more than one staff person. The need is greater this year than we've seen in a long time, with kids being socially isolated, being home, and then coming back to school, and just all the challenges. Some of you are parents, and you've heard this before. So we actually have more staff this year. The county added some staff to each of the districts, and the new staff that we have are really just Resource Connectors for families. And let me just share with you a little bit of what that team wanted me to tell you. So in Central School District alone, we have 375 students that are being seen ongoing by our school-based mental health therapists and our school-based mental health associates at all three grade levels. One of the positions that's brand-new this year is a bilingual, bicultural, master's-level therapist that we have that floats between all of the schools. By herself, she has a caseload of 49 Spanish-speaking families that she is connecting those families to resources on a daily basis and also helping with students' mental health needs. Oh, excuse me. Of that 49, 80% are Spanish-speaking. So in your packet, you also have information on the school-based mental health team and all of the services that they provide at all of the districts. And then once a year, we also break that down for each district. So we'll have the district-specific data coming up at the end of June. But it's a great team. They're great staff. They're the go-to people in the schools that connect with mental health needs and also for anything related to a resource. So in my four minutes left, here we go. I talked about veteran services. We have an amazing veteran service office that connects people, anything related to veterans, they're going to connect them, not only with VA benefits, but also any other resource for veterans. I think you've all heard of the Polk County Warming Centers, so I'm going to just skip over that. But just know that Matt Smucker and his team do a great job. That funding comes to the county, and we put all of that funding right back out into Matt and to the local churches and to the paid staff and volunteers who, on nights like this, we are open in two locations. So that, that's something that our department helps with. We also have full-time suicide prevention coordinator in the county. We are offering training at all grade levels, at all system partner levels. There is information in your packet about two different types of training, because with depression and anxiety and some of the suicidal ideology that we're seeing, not only in schools, but everywhere, the more training, the more awareness we have. Our Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is a six-county coalition run by Polk County, that's where that information is if you need anything there. And then the last thing that I'll just mention to you guys is we also put out resource guides in English and Spanish every year. It's for Yamhill, Marion, and Polk Counties. So all of the information on every available resource that a community or a family might need is in here. It's in your packet. There's a link in your packet, and then we have some hard copies here. And if you ever wanted a bunch of these printed, you can go print them. No, we will print some.
Thank you.
Normally, I would say y'all go to the website and print a bunch, because they cost about $3 to print. But we actually had some funding, and then we're printing a whole bunch in English and Spanish, so we'll have some available to anybody in the central area, Independence as well, who needs those. We don't give these out to families, because there's hundreds of resource. We ask them the resource they're looking for. We find it, take a picture, scan it, whatever, and give them the resources that they want. These are all in all law enforcement vehicles, but it's a nice little bible of resources to have, and those are here, too. Okay. 13 minutes, baby. I have minutes to spare.
Counselor Job?
I have a question on the resources. Do you have to be an adult? Can you be a 17-year-old in need of services, or even a 16-year-old unaccompanied? Can you, can you come in and get help, or?
So if somebody walked into our office and asked for food or resource, we don't ask them how old they are. We just help them. If a three-year-old walked in, I'd probably say, hey, where's your mom or dad? So you know, there is, there is a balance there. The school-based mental health team in the schools, they have that really good balance of being able to connect with students privately and also working with parents the majority of the time, you know, when, when that's appropriate. But I think the answer is, if there's someone that needs help, that should not be a barrier.
Perfect. And do they have to show ID? Okay. Thank you.
Let me rephrase. For most of the programs that we do, we don't require ID. We don't ask about documentation. We don't ask about status. There are certain programs that require that, and it's not us or the county that's requiring it. It's the funder that will require that, and it's, it's different for every funding stream. But when people need the basics, like if people need food, we're giving people food. I mean, it's that simple. People just, if they want food, they get food. If they need those hygiene supplies, if somebody comes in and says, I don't have diapers, they're walking away with diapers and probably formula and probably a gift card to WinCo to give more. So those things are available.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have one. Can you talk a little bit about the prospects for future funding? Because we've, because county funding has gone up and down over a number of years, and I would be concerned if, if the, if the future prospects looks up and down.
I'd like to make a motion that the city of Independence gives me $10 million a year for that. Okay. I can't make motions. That's a great question. Funding does always change. There's not very many good things that's happened because of COVID and the pandemic, but one of the good things is, a lot of government and a lot of entities have a lot of money, and we're making the best use of that, not only at the county, but in partnerships with both the city of Independence, Monmouth, Dallas, all of the cities in the county, on finding ways to do things that will sustain. So having a building here, getting that cost taken care of, and then just plugging programs in, that's one of the ways that we're looking. We are professional grant writers in my department, sometimes averaging $1 million a year in cash grants that we write. We're always looking for those new and creative ways. And it's the perfect segue, Mr. Mayor, to say that I just got an email that the House bill that we all went in on to have homeless services, $1 million for Polk County, just passed. So that sounds, like they said, it's a done deal, and there'll be a press conference on Thursday. So what that means is, $1 million coming to Polk County to bring partners together. All of the cities were a part of that partnership in the county to start addressing, from a prevention standpoint, issues around houselessness, homelessness, and those families that are at risk. So we're always looking for state and other types of funding to keep things going.
Questions?
And we do hope to get part of that $3.7 million to help address and prevent youth homelessness, too, that had.
Yep. That's exactly right. So the Marion and Polk County Housing, excuse me, Homeless Alliance received a grant for $3.75 million to address homelessness for youth in both Marion and Polk County. So some of you guys are going to be a part of making sure that we're not an afterthought, but that we're right at the table and thinking about, do we have as many on the street homeless youth as they do in Salem? No, we don't. But we also don't want it. We want to prevent that from ever happening, and that's where these kinds of partnerships can really work.
Let's call for questions.
Well, I was just going to say that, not really a question, but you know, I thank you for being here and presenting what you did. I've worked with Brent and his team before, and if anybody watching this doesn't know him and his team, he is the genuine deal. And when he says he's going to do something, he does it. He's a, he and his team are kind of a team that just gets things done. And so I really appreciate his work ethic. You know, as a new counselor, still a relatively new counselor, I had someone call me and said they were in need of some help. They were in domestic situation and were struggling. And I was like, whoa, what do I do? And so I called Brent and his, and his services, and they immediately helped her and her kids, who were on the verge of homelessness. And I was like, I was like, wow, it's so awesome that we have this type of resource and these type of people in our community that can help that. So I just wanted to thank you for, for what you do.
Appreciate that. The kudos. I mean, I'm the mouthpiece that's here today as the department head. I get to come and do these things, but I have the best team. It's the team that gets that done. The whole FCO team is incredible.
Great. Well, thank you for taking the time to come over today. I think we have some, an issue later on in the evening related to, to working with you. So we'll get to that a little bit later on.
Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I don't want this seat under any circumstances.
Brent?
Brent? Brent?
Yes.
Can you swap me out in English for my Spanish? Because this would be super helpful in my day job.
There we go. Okay. I have the next report.
I have a Spanish, if you want to use mine.
No. I have, I have a Spanish. I need an English.
She needs, yeah, because.
I'll have Spanish.
There you go. Okay. It's been a busy couple of weeks, and so I have a number of things to report to you folks. Testified today at the Oregon Legislature on the idea related to a state bank, the possibility of having one of those here in Oregon, just like North Dakota. Recently gave the State of the City address, which the state, the city has put out for folks to see in cooperation with the chamber. The city of Monmouth, Mayor Kuntz and myself, along with their city manager, Marty Wine, and our illustrious chief, Bob Mason, we met with Swift Care about bringing healthcare, expanded healthcare opportunities to Independence and Monmouth. We're continuing to try to work with Salem Health, because everybody knows that there are healthcare needs in this community. You heard Brent mention that there's been legislative action on House Bill 4123. We're very excited about that. Both, I serve on the League of Oregon Cities Board and also on the Mid-Wilhelmet Valley Council of Governments, and we've been pushing that to make sure that we can get the dollars and cents to do rural for here as part of one of eight projects around the state to help with homelessness. We're also pushing on some transportation funding, and so that's a collection of LOC with cities around the state and council of governments, as you heard from a report a while back. That's 43 governments between Polk, Marion, and Yamhill County. Met, attended a recent League of Oregon Cities Regional Meeting of Cities, and one of the things we talked about was training. And there are trainings that the league does in a variety of different things, but they wanted me to ask you, do you folks prefer trainings in the evenings or on weekends?
Evening.
Evenings? Evening?
Same here.
Evenings? Evenings or weekends?
I'm fine either way.
Either one?
Probably weekends.
Weekends?
Either.
Either. Counselor Job, did you tell me?
Neither.
Wrong answer.
Evenings in the week are probably better.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that along.
Advance notice.
Right, I understand that. Okay. Other things to keep you informed of, there are some things going on at the airport. It looks like the FAA has given Oregon Aviation some money to put up a fence, and there are some issues related to that that we're figuring out between aviation. I spoke with Chief Stang today over at Polk One. Our building folks are involved, so a number of issues of getting a fence up and permits and how you're supposed to do things, and so that's working its way through. So we may have more to report on that. Last week, Counselor Corr and I met with Russ Monk and also with city staff. They were talking to us a little bit about the small homeless shelters that this particular firm makes that people are using around the region to give people a place so they're not in the cold and the rain. Just an information. As you know, we're chasing, I've been working along with staff, infrastructure funding, and we'll be meeting with Senator Merkley's staff. They're coming out next week, excuse me, later in this week, and we'll be talking infrastructure with them. Also, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the Oregon Director will be out visiting next week, looking at funding options for infrastructure and business support in this area. Something I'm very proud of, the City of Independence, City of Monmouth, Polk One, Western Oregon University, SED-COR, Paul Evans and Representative Evans and Senator Patterson, we were all recognized, we as organizations were recognized by the Mid-Wilhelmet Valley Council of Governments for the Regional Cooperation Award for the work that's been going on for the past two years of all working together to serve the needs of the community, working outside the silos, helping the school district do things when they're swamped. Some of our staff have helped. They have resources that we've used. The university's been helpful. And I didn't realize, but was told by others, that there are other communities within the region and within the state that have never talked to their school district, that have never talked to their fire district, that have never talked to their higher education. They work in isolation, so I'm very proud of that award. And you can see the, I think it's on our website, you can see the award presentation was made by Counselor Gordon, Polk County Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Gordon. And I was very touched by the comments that were made by the thank yous. And so it's really nice to see that other people recognize that good things are going on. And finally, I'm looking forward to on Saturday, besides staying warm, that the, as you heard last time, the Women's Club is having a special event, and I'm gonna help auction and raise some money for the Women's Club on Saturday. So if you have nothing else going on, go to the Women's Club Saturday, late afternoon. The auction starts at 5:00. So with that, moving forward, Counselor, Council Liaison reports. And so Traffic Safety Commission, Counselor Roden, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah, we talked at our last traffic safety meeting about better accessing the data off of the machines and having a clear, easy download process so that we can have better data from those. We also talked about the potential of moving the, moving those to different locations so that we can monitor and maybe control speeds in different areas around town. The bridge is moving along, and we're gonna start repainting curbs in our community in the next fiscal year and making things more observant for people and more safe for people to drive and commute and walk in our town. So it was a good meeting.
Great, thank you. Counselor Job, Historic Preservation, did you folks have staff?
So this meeting was actually a rather short meeting. It was more of rehashing the previous meeting, which was a very long meeting with multiple applicants for some changes. And on this one, I think like Fred and the commission were trying to do things better next time, to not have the same issues. There was a church, and they kind of just passed it through. So that's gonna have some alterations, which I think, after thinking about it more, they decided that, I mean, they've already done it, but it was something that they wished they could take back. So it was good, though, because Fred was asking for guidance, and they were giving it, and I think that everybody is on the same page.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Corr, Independence Days.
Yes, we met on the 10th. Janice Thompson, who's been the chair, I think, for the last 10 years or so, has moved to Staton. And as we approved a couple of weeks back, Courtney Williams is now on the team and ran the meeting like a tight ship, which for those of us who work a day job really appreciate with an evening meeting. Only things to report, really, there's obviously a lot of stuff still in the discussion phase, but YMCA is on board. Thank you, Mayor, for that reach out to them. And we're looking at lots of ways to make this a special event. I think with Courtney and Ramon's help, it's gonna be amazing.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your efforts on that. Mr. Mason, to you.
Good evening, everyone. First up, the most important news. I spoke with Wendy Brown, and she informed me that they have had nine total applicants for opening for city manager. Of those nine, only one didn't meet minimum requirements. One did meet and just met. Three, she said, were qualified candidates, which means that they had some level of experience beyond the minimum qualifications. And four, she classified as well-qualified and/or ideal candidates. So we're still fairly early in our recruiting timeline, and she's going to be continuing her headhunting calls next week, and at this point, she's feeling pretty good about it. Any questions on that? All right. We received news that DEQ approved the wastewater master plan as submitted with no modifications. So if you recall, we had a engineer from West Tech here at our work session on January 25th that went over that entire wastewater master plan with you, and we will be bringing that back now for adoption. I didn't think you would need to hear that whole presentation again, having that, you know, having that really nice man from West Tech come back, but I did wonder if there were gonna be questions for him specifically. We do pay these consultants to come and spend time with you, and we definitely will do that if you think you're gonna have questions, but nothing has changed from the presentation that was made on the 25th. So you don't really have to give an answer right now. I guess if you do have questions or think you're gonna have questions, just reach out and we'll have them here, but I would expect that to come forward within the next meeting or two. Okay? All right. Hopefully, you have seen the information on social media, but if not, all 10 of the 70,000-pound beams were installed on the F Street Bridge last week. And if you didn't see it, it's a pretty good post. I think Emmanuel is continuing to show us good work and getting our information out there. We do still expect that bridge to reopen midsummer. Questions on that? We are bringing back talking lamp posts and benches. This is a Sean Irvine project, and he's in the room tonight, so if there are specific questions, he could certainly address them. This is from an Oregon Heritage Grant, and there is gonna be a little bit of a twist this time in that they're gonna have 10 to 12 historic buildings telling people about their history as well as other things, benches, streetlights. And he's also going to be using it to get some information from visitors, like where they're from and what they like about Independence and other information that will be helpful to our Economic Development Department for the work that they do. Any questions on that? Great, this is going really well. Next, Alex and Sean wrote a grant. Alex from SED-COR, have a hard time with his last name, so I'm just gonna say Alex. They wrote a grant and helped the Career Technical Education Department from Central High School with funds to help replace their greenhouse. So this project was one of those collaborative projects, and I don't know, I meant to ask Sean, is that all the funding needed or are we still kind of?
They actually wrote the grant. We just helped them with, you know, we reviewed the grant and helped them to kind of put these together.
Okay, well, good. So the real takeaways for me were this will help with a bigger, newer greenhouse. It will be ADA accessible, and it will be fitted with broadband sensors and smart irrigation to help the students learn the newer techniques in doing that kind of work.
Nice.
Good? All right. Let's see. Staff, as you said, Counselor Corr, has been putting a lot of time toward Independence Days planning, and we have pulled in more staff this year for that. And Courtney, our downtown manager, really has assumed the lead role for the event. Good or bad, we are fully committed to Independence Days and it being a success, but that does mean that we have a lot more staff time going to it. I do plan on a great event this year. A lot of energy and great ideas are coming from those meetings, so. Planning is also underway for Summer Series, which we are gonna say will be normal this year, all right? Back to normal Summer Series, and that will be for seven weeks, starting the first Thursday and Friday after the Fourth of July. Same format as in the past with movies on Thursdays, and the Friday night bands, I'm told, will have both opening and headlining events every Friday night. So I have had a lot of questions in the community about that. Are we gonna have Summer Series and is it gonna be like it used to be? And the answer is yes, that's the direction that we're heading, and they are booking bands. So that work actually starts this early so that you can get the bands that you want.
One question on that. Do we have a manager hired for that, or are we using the same sources as last year?
Yeah, find a mic, Sean.
The short answer is we're doing it somewhat, mostly the way we did it last year, where we, where staff is taking on some roles, we have a day of operations person and a separate alcohol concessionaire.
Okay. Thank you.
And speaking of events, there are several large events coming to town this summer. We have the National Psoriasis Foundation Bike Ride that is going to be here. That's 500-plus riders. We have Joy Ride, which is a Cycle Oregon Women's Ride, and they expect 1,000-plus riders. We have a Wine Country Half Marathon, and this is the first year that we will have them coming to join us in town. And they, we've had some meetings with them, and they're expecting 1,500-plus runners on a marathon-type event that will leave town into the county and come back. For that one, the finish line is actually proposed to be on Main Street in front of City Hall. It is a weekend, and it has passed through the planning stages necessary, but I just wanted to start getting that information out now because I would expect that some people are going to be surprised that we would block the street like that for a finish line, but they are doing all the work they need to for permitting and answering all the questions that we have. So along that line, we are also working, because of all of these events, on a new large event permit management system. And Courtney has really taken lead with Sean and his department's help, but we're trying to make sure that when these large events come in, that we're thinking of all the right questions and managing them in a way that really minimizes the demands on our staff and also minimizes the disruption for the local traffic and people that are here while still really providing some good opportunities for people to participate and for fun. Yes?
Do you have dates on these?
I could get them.
Okay, that'd be great.
Probably in my calendar over there.
The Psoriasis Foundation Ride and Joy Ride are both in June. I don't, I think Psoriasis is the first weekend, and Joy Ride is maybe the third weekend? I could get back to you on that. The half marathon is Labor Day weekend.
Is that going to replace the Hops Run?
No, the Hops Run maybe will also go on. That's gonna happen later in September.
People are wanting to come here and do these events, which is great, and also has made it really clear to us that we've gotta get the system in place to manage them well. So any other questions on all of that? We will get that information out. I think it's not too soon to start getting that information out on the ones that have actually confirmed for us, so we'll run that through the communication system and get it out.
Yeah, and I just want to say about Independence Days, I know this has been the trend to partner. Makes a lot of sense to partner with other organizations to help us pull that off, but I think we need to push more in that direction as much as we can. Staff time is limited, I know that. So I think the more we could, and we're gonna learn some of that this year, I think, with Courtney at the helm, so.
I agree completely. Thank you, Counselor Corr. Last thing I have, Ken Perkins, who has been a dedicated city employee with us for many, many years, 27 actually, starting in the summer of 1994, is leaving us, and Thursday is his last day. So Ken has done great work here, and we will greatly miss him. His request is going away is very small, didn't want a lot of fanfare, but I did want to make sure that you were all aware that Thursday is his last day. Any other questions? That would be the end of my report.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Sergeant, I think it's your turn. OLCC renewals. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor McCarl, Counsel, Sergeant Juventino Bañuelos. This is actually my first report to Counsel on this matter. My intent was to read portions of the memorandum that has already been provided, and, but if you've already read it and you'd prefer I just get to the bottom line, I can do that as well.
I think we've all read, so summary is fine.
All right, so the police department has conducted its review of all of the renewal applications to ensure compliance with applicable regulations, and after doing so, there were really only two businesses, there were two businesses that had two DUIs that were related to their establishment during 2021. Outside of that, you can see that most of our businesses had zero involvement. And so bottom line to that is that our recommendation is to approve all applications.
Great. Questions?
I appreciated the detail, the OLCC detail in here also that explains what the rules are with that.
Sure.
Thank you. Is everybody okay? Okay, this is an action item, please.
And I move to recommend approval of all of the liquor licenses as stated upon receipt of the required fees.
A second?
I have a second, a motion and a second by Martin Willis. Is there a discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Both carries. Thank you, Sergeant. Appreciate it. Okay, Chief, to you.
Okay, next item of business is a agreement with FCO to provide services for us in the way of pretty much what Brent came and talked to about, talked to us about tonight. This was more information than I knew he was going to share. I've been being told that the whole moving to Monmouth Independence and the building site and all of that has been secret up until, I would say, here today. So we've been working with Brent, really since I started as the interim CM. Brent and Monmouth and myself have gotten together a bunch of times, talking about trying to provide these services to us, and through that conversation, he ended up convincing his county really to move services over here when they started looking at numbers. So this proposal today is just a start at that. It's a, really, we called it a pilot project in all of our meetings, where we wanted to provide Brent with the ability to put services to the people that he didn't really have other funding to do, right? As he explained today, he has a lot of funding already, but at times, often, I guess, he'll find situations where the funding he needs is restricted to the person that needs it. And so the monies that we're proposing to make available to Brent are for independent citizens with needs that he is trying to meet to keep them from losing their job or becoming homeless, those sorts of really tragic life events, right? And he really doesn't know how much money he's gonna find that he needs to split, so we started with a pilot project and put a report back to Counsel regarding his findings, what he finds the need out there is. So Monmouth has already ran this through and has agreed to participate with the $25,000 pilot project. So this goes through June 30. Starting July 1, we really won't have an agreement with them. And are there any questions? Yes?
What pool of ARPA money does this come from directly?
This, well, so we'll talk about ARPA money later tonight, but it would be resident support is where it would fall. I understood that to be a bucket of its own, and I believe that's the appropriate bucket for this to come from. At the time, I think former city manager Pesamir had told him he had $250,000, because they had that number already when I started meeting with them. So at the time, they had already been offered a bigger chunk of money to provide this service, and Brent found a way to kind of bring it back and make it more manageable for us to see just what the need is out there. And he also found a way to provide the staff, which is what we thought we were going to be paying for here in our community with Polk County paying for that through other funds.
Is Monmouth giving the same amount?
Yeah, we're both doing the same pilot to start off with $25,000 each.
Everybody okay? I just wanted to say, you know, having been in some of these meetings, it's been, it's been wonderful to see everybody working together, finding solutions, like changing rules, changing situations, and there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and I want to credit Chief and his peers in our sister city and also at the county, and there's a lot of people doing a lot of good work. So this is an action item. If somebody would like to make a motion, that would be really good.
I'm really. I'm really happy to move to approve the intergovernmental agreement and authorize the interim city manager to sign the IGA and any associated documents.
I second that.
Motion is seconded by Councillor Morton. Is there further discussion? Scary, no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Chief, I think you get the next one, too.
Okay, as promised, I told you I'd be back with the dissolution agreement to dissolve WIMPAG, which we've been pretty kept up to date on why that is necessary, but a quick rehash, there's no longer cable channels or a way to, to transmit the fees that WIMPAG was, was putting out. So this dissolution agreement would dissolve that IGA and disperse of the funds. Any questions?
On, yes, on the dispersal of funds, it says that they're going back to the general fund for use of public access capital equipment purchase as applicable. I'm not sure what that means. That's under fiscal impact.
So under number four, item four, it talks about the capital funds having restrictions placed on them because they were paid fees and we are agreeing through this dissolution that we will follow the rules and only spend them as authorized under the Cable Communications Policy Act of 1984. So I did have a conversation with Ms. Butch already about how we track that and just to make sure that we follow what we're agreeing to here.
Okay, I think that's a very equitable solution.
Everybody else okay? Okay, this is an action item.
I move to approve the WIMPAG dissolution agreement and authorize the interim city manager to sign the dissolution agreement and any associated documents.
The motion?
Second.
Second by Takeus. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Irvine, I think you have the next one. I just want to say for anybody watching on TV, it really is nice to have a counsel that reads their material in advance and it, it does help so that answers are, are frequently found in the material and I just really appreciate counsel doing that. It allows us to move very promptly on, on things and spend the time on the other things that we need to. So, Mr. Irvine, to you.
Great. Mayor, counsel, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Presented for your action is a request to approve the sports park feasibility study agreement. As you recall, we, council goal was to really kind of take a, take a hard look at sports, sports fields of the community, see where, where the needs were, see where the opportunities were and see what we could do. This feasibility study, I'm not sure you reviewed it, really will take kind of that holistic look at it and really give us the, I think, the insights and the numbers that we need to really kind of weigh the, the options and the opportunities. It's going to look at, you know, everything from kind of existing and potential demand for sports, sports field usage in the community. It'll propose some potential designs and layouts. It'll look at operations and maintenance costs. It'll look at, you know, kind of opportunities to bring in tournaments depending on the field arrangements and alignments and then, you know, kind of propose some five-year, a five-year pro forma for whatever the preferred alignment or layout would be. So there's definitely, there's some public involvement built in here as well as also a lot of stakeholder engagement with the, the local sports groups. But yeah, they're excited to get going and I was really pleased frankly with the, the level of response that we got to our request for proposals. So we'll be happy to answer any questions about this, yeah.
I have one. On page 68 of the proposal that we are approving, I believe, from the Johnson Consulting, it says on task number eight, site analysis, are they aware, because I want to make sure, because I totally support this, but I want to make sure that they are aware of potential flooding in that area?
Yes.
And so is that part of their study is going to see the impacts of potential flooding on the fields?
Yeah, and that's, yeah. We, I've actually spoken with the, the staff from Johnson and we discussed the, that is that a flood plain will be underwater and that's going to be a, you know, kind of a maintenance issue and, you know, obviously no indoor facilities.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? If not, this is another action item.
I should have done this one.
Somebody?
Oh, sorry, one more, one more thing that our attorney asked me to add as well. The, the fiscal impact says this is not to exceed contract to 50,000. It's actually a lump sum, so it's a, it's, I think, in the, in the end, it's going to be the same organ that put down 50,000. The staff report just says it's a not-to-exceed agreement, but it's actually a lump sum contract.
All right, I move to approve the agreement with Johnson Consulting and authorize the interim city manager to sign the contract and any associated documents.
I'll second that.
The motion's seconded. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we have council announcements before we adjourn to the work session. Any announcements?
Not an announcement, Mayor. Question, your, your comment during your report about Swift Care, does that include behavioral health services as well?
I don't think so, at this point.
It's definitely a need. We definitely need to have it, especially if we're going to talk preventing homelessness.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
That was called out at the meeting. The Congress is going to operate that supplement.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Additional announcements? Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to adjourn the meeting. We're going to take about 10 minutes. Let's start, let's plan at 20 minutes till to meet downstairs in the event center and we'll have a staff presentation and we'll go from there. Any objection? Okay, see you in 12 minutes.